Good morning. I now call the January 17th, 2023 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:01 a.m. Please sign into your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board's adopted Uniform Meeting Procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular item on the agenda, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Superintendent Gullett?
Good morning. Thank you. Excuse me, Madam Chair, members of the Board. A little allergies issued this morning. So I have just a few very brief items as we begin today. Great to see you. Like a couple of you today up here, I am wearing my button on behalf of the Junior League of Ocalma member there and very proud to represent our Little Black Dress Initiative this week, and we are recognizing the underprivileged in our community. You may or may not know, we have 59,000 residents in Marion County that are living in poverty, and about 60% of those living in poverty don't have books at home for their children. So as a strong advocate for our students, I wanted to make sure that we are mindful of that and the work we're doing to help support our students and literacy. I also want to make a request, if I may, Madam Chair, for a shade session to talk about security. We need to provide an update to our newest Board members, and I've spoken with Mr. McFadden, and we think it's important to go ahead and try to schedule one of those, and he has some other updates he'd like to provide the Board. So if we could do that sometime this week would be great. It didn't have to be today, but it could be, maybe we could talk about it on Thursday. I wanted to provide the Board some opportunity to consider that. And so now, without further delay, introduce Mr. Ayers, Dr. Hembrook, and want to reiterate again that we're here as a follow-up from our last work session, where I know the Board had robust discussion on the instructional calendar, a lot of great feedback. The team came back with some options. It doesn't mean these are the only options, but in getting the feedback from the Board, this is what you see. And also, again, to say, I've been very pleased and very appreciative of the committee, including Vice Chair Thrower's presence on the committee, to let this process evolve. I did not need to be part of that, but I greatly appreciate everybody's work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, you've handed it off to them, I believe, so, Mr. Ayers, you're up.
All right, Madam Chair, Madam Co-Chair, Board members, Dr. Gullett, Ms. Elena Martinez-Lopez, thank you for the opportunity to come back today to present the draft, three different draft calendars that we presented after listening to your feedback last time and some of the must-haves and non-negotiables, so to speak, that y'all had. Understanding when we look at these draft calendars, the early release days on the calendar does not impact the start-stop times, days, or the days that we actually attend school. So whether that early release day falls on a Wednesday, a Friday, or not at all, does not impact the days of the week, or the days of the year that we actually attend school. So those can be discussed as to what day of the week that would fall on, or whether it would fall on a day of the week at all. The one thing that need for the Board to understand is to add another whole day off wouldn't be feasible because of the 196 contracted day calendar within the Union contract. So, right now, the three drafts that we presented, Draft A and B were similar in the sense that we heard the Board wanted to end before Memorial Day and wanted the full week back, or the full-time back at Christmas break, or winter break that we had had. So in keeping with 86 days in the first semester, the one changed that would be Thanksgiving break being the three-day break. And so with A and B, one has it on an early-release Wednesday, and one has it on the early-release Friday. There is a typo on Draft B that has the early release on a Wednesday for the month of November, and that was a typo. That shouldn't be there. Draft C was in response to some feedback that we've received of wanting to maintain the week at Thanksgiving. If we maintain the week at Thanksgiving, as Draft C shows, teachers would have to come back after Memorial Day, and we would lose the April 19 midterm break that we built in. And then even given that, that does leave us with 85 days in the first semester, which again is below the 86 days that we need for a credit generation.
The only thing that I'll add is, the Board had also requested for the early release to delete those from the end, so April and May, but with testing season, we heard back from some that two days in April, if we decide to go with early release, might be beneficial so that training could happen for testing circumstances.
Yeah, Dr. Hembrook's correct. Yeah, all the ones, we removed the early release days from April and May, except for the first two in April.
I have clarifying questions.
Okay, Dr. James?
So, in an effort to advocate for our families, we presented three calendars that all have early release days, one-hour early release days. And so I would like to get assurances from Dr. Gullett and the staff regarding things that we're going to be able to support our families, and our teachers. So my questions are, regardless of which day we choose, because I'm sure we'll hash that out in a minute, our students are going to get out an hour early, and many of our teachers take their children with them to work as a luxury of being able to work where your child attends school. I would like to offer that we provide, and if I'm speaking out of turn, please let me know, but I would like to offer the assurance to our staff that they not only, their child can not only participate in MAP on those Wednesdays, if it is so appropriate, and they cannot stay in their parents' classroom or their parent's space, but additionally, I don't believe we should charge our employees for that. I think that we should offer that hour, seeing as we are presenting this calendar to our staff and going to ask them to invest in this professional development opportunity weekly, I think that we need to figure out how to make the concessions to make that happen for their students to be supervised. And if we decide, or the school-based leadership decides they can stay in their parents' classroom, I certainly don't want to overreach there, but if they need to go into our extended-day program for that hour, I want, I think our Board should offer that to them at no cost. So I guess that's a suggestion I'm making, and again, if it's...
Thank you, Board Member James. Dr. Hembrook can speak to that because there's been some conversation about the Marion After-School Program.
Yes, thank you. So if the students are already enrolled in Marion After-School Programs, they would attend Marion After-School Programs for that early-release hour with no additional fees. It's a flat-rate fee. If we have to do some type of drop-in, we would then need to hire additional staff, and so that would incur a fee towards Marion After-School Programs.
So that's the second thing I have to offer is, I would like to see our district offer a drop-in on Wednesdays for our families who need that hour. I think that there may be people within our community that need help with just the hour, and I would like to see us offer a drop-in opportunity with a fee attached to it, to our community, to be able to cover that. What I'm asking for is that for our staff members, we figure out how to close that gap for them.
May I? Absolutely, but there's also, Marion After-School Programs is also, it's a separate entity, and it has its own budget, its own funds. So budgetarily, again, I don't want to speak out of turn because I don't know all of the details of it, but I know enough to know that that may require that the Board or the school system pay that fee to Marion After-School Programs, as opposed to a simple absorption.
Yep, and I understand that, and so that is the suggestion I'm making, I guess, from a Board's perspective financially, to help support our teachers in this transition. And we may find it's not very necessary. Maybe most of the kids can hang out in their parents' classroom while their parent goes to do professional development, but if we find that that is not appropriate and not necessary, I want to help our teachers close that gap. And our staff, so not just our teachers, but our paraprofessionals, or anyone else on campus that may participate in, even our principals. We have principals who take their kids to school. So that's the questions I have regarding supporting our community.
I believe Dr. Gullett has some additional information to offer, but I know I do as well. Go ahead, Dr. Gullett.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know about additional information. I was just going to thank Board Member James for, sorry, pardon me, that feedback, and we'll certainly take a look at, if that's something the Board wants to do, we'll have to look at the cost, and as to Attorney Power's point, we'll have to look at what that would take. I do know in conversation with the team, that is something we discussed, and part of that is not just the cost financially, but finding staff members to staff it. So that's why I defer to Dr. Hembrook, who oversees the program with Ms. Eubanks, but certainly that is something that if the Board wants to do, we will absolutely take a look at that, because we do know that hour, that we would need to try to make accommodations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. So, being a parent who has always utilized Marion After-School Programs, the team knows I'm a strong advocate for what they do there, and that that is a wonderful resource for our employees as well as the community. A couple of things that I would like to say about that recommendation, because, Dr. James, I completely hear you and understand exactly the justification behind the recommendation. What I would propose is that we move forward in discussing the instructional calendar and see if we even land on early-release days. I know that right now, we have the three options that all include them, but should we choose a calendar that has early-release days, then I think we actually need to have a secondary conversation about what Dr. James has proposed, and here's my reason why. Because we need some actual numbers. How many of our employees actually are using Marion After-School Programs and how many are not? Because that's going to alter automatically. There may be a significant number of employees without school-aged children who are not using Marion After-School Programs, and then that really does give us an idea of how many people potentially are using that drop-in. The staffing issue is a strong concern because we're only talking one extra hour. So are we saying that the staff of Marion After-School Programs might be able to take on that extra hour? We don't know the answer to that, and that's a question for their existing staff, in addition to if we were to just hire people for an hour a week, what does that look like? So I think that, I certainly appreciate the feedback and the conversation because I completely agree, and that's what we've heard from staff, is the concern, if you, they've all worked it out this year. They haven't had any kind of early release, whether it's one hour, three hours, whatever, they haven't had that this year. But that's what we've heard predominantly from those folks who don't want to have an early release, are often those employees with children. Employees that don't have children are all for it, and that was kind of the feedback I was reading, if you all haven't been, like, seen it that way. That's, the voice of the people that I was listening to or reading the most was those who are going to be most significantly impacted. Yes, the employee who wants the professional development, but also that employee who has a child or children that is going to be significantly impacted by what this might look like for their rest of their day. So if it's possible and if it pleases the Board, I recommend we move forward with discussion on the actual calendar itself, and if we decide we want to have an early-release day, which right now, the three proposed draft options do include them, but if we land on that, we are absolutely having one, then perhaps we need to have the secondary discussion on how we ensure those employees' children are cared for.
If I may, yes, I agree, and so as a Board member, what I just want to make very clear is that, and I don't think I'm unique as a Board member in this, with the proposed options all including an early-release day as we move forward, I want our staff to feel assured that we are going to support them in closing that gap and making sure that their needs, which we have all heard, are going to be met. And so that's kind of my purpose behind bringing it up, is to simply say, as we proceed forward, I want them to know that this Board is going to, and this Board member is going to support them in making sure that they feel supported in having this professional development on their schedule.
Just some clarification. My understanding, coming from the classroom last year, is that employees' children could not, already could not be in their classrooms, so they were either getting picked up by a loved one or a friend, or they were already enrolled in extended day. So I'm just curious how many of our staff members that's going to affect, because legally, I believe, they already have to be an extended day for their, you know, for their contract time, whether it's 30 minutes or 45 minutes, an hour at the end of the day, because their students are not permitted to be in their parents' classrooms after school or before school. So how many, I'm just curious, as we move forward, and I'm fine with the discussion being held, I just, I'm not sure that it's going to affect as many staff members as we're saying. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, yes. Great opening discussion, definitely points that we will be committed to keeping in mind and working through, at least that's my input, should we land on an early-release calendar. I think it is very important to convey how committed we are to making sure that whatever we land on is workable for all and that we can afford it. Which leads me to a couple of points. This kind of reminds me of Shark Tank. Because when it comes to Wednesday early release, I'm out. I think that it has been made very clear, we have, it's reality. It's time to face our own reality, and the reality, as I see it, is that it has been made loud and clear to us that we have a lot of non-traditional families that are doing all they can to balance work and life and children and custody agreements, and things are very complicated in people's lives today. So my goal at the end of all this is to reduce complications and increase productivity without breaking the bank. There has to be a way to do that. Wednesdays are traditionally that changeover day for parents that are sharing custody, and there was a very good case made by a parent, an advocate, an attorney, that shared the difficulties that Wednesday early release will create. Friday seems to be possibly better choice for families. However, it gets me thinking about our employees, who are under tremendous pressure from all directions. And I know, as a former teacher, by the time I got to Friday, I don't know that I had one brain cell left to really be able to benefit from the types of development and support that we know that they need and that we want to provide. And we also know that by doing early releases, as we have in the past, and these are, this is a very honest conversation, that has enabled us to... I'm trying to think of a less direct way to say this, but I guess I'll just say it. It has enabled us to kind of cheap out, because we, then it still counts as a full day of instruction, it doesn't cost us any more money, but what has it really gained us? And as a parent and as a teacher, I always felt like the early-release days kind of came up on me as a parent. Oh, Jesus, now I need to adjust. I feel like by the time, and I'm talking reality of our district as it currently stands, by the time all of the students were picked up and settled, and to me, settled does not mean the receptionist trying to ride herd on 20 kids that haven't been picked up yet because the parents forgot, or a late bus, or whatever. And imagine the stress that that teacher or staff member is under when it's, actually they're the one that's supposed to be presenting that day, you know? It's, we have to be able to do better, and that leads me to, our community just supported us overwhelmingly in passing the funding referendum, again. And as I read the funding referendum, and I know there almost never seems to be enough money to do what we need to do, because school safety is so important, you know, there's just all of these factors. However, in the end, it's costing us in recruitment, it's costing us in turnover, it's costing us in not having a qualified teacher in every single classroom, because when that doesn't happen, you end up with paras teaching, and they're not being even paid an instructor's salary. We're trying to work on that. There's just so many factors. So my point is, if there ever was a time to do something different, if there ever was a time to do something historic, if there ever was a time to really do something that truly meets the needs of where we are right now at this time, then this is it, because we have the majority of the support from the community, people are listening, they're providing us feedback, and what they are saying is, please, God, don't give us any more complications, you know? We have teachers that have never set foot in the classroom before, that don't have an education degree. They need a certain kind of professional development. We have veteran teachers that need a different kind of support. They all need more time. I would propose, for this time that we are in, to really think outside the box, knowing that if we have the courage to really do this, hopefully, it's going to get us on a path where we have the stability and the expertise on the daily, so that we can really accelerate and get to that A district that we know that we're all committed to having. So, to me, the only way is to look, and I'm glad Mark Avery's here from the Union, because to me, the only way is to add some days to the instructional calendar for our teachers, at least for our teachers, and for our paraprofessionals who are asking, who are functioning as teachers. Let's, again, let's admit reality and see where that takes us.
I'll go next.
Dr. James? So, I respect Board Member Thrower's response to Wednesdays being a hard stop for her, and in that same regard, Fridays are a hard stop for me. Similar to what Ms. Thrower shared, I have been an exhausted teacher and administrator, and I'll tell you, the absolute last thing I would want to do on a Friday at 2 o'clock is go calibrate with my peers about how to grade, fourth-grade writing. I'm just being honest, and I think in the spirit of transparency, we should be transparent. So, I, and I said this the last time we had this conversation, came, I grew up in a district that did early-release Wednesdays, and I was a teacher in a district that did it. It was incredibly functional. The hour, the respected hour, is incredibly functional. So, I want to offer, let's pick Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday. If Wednesday is a hard stop for Ms. Thrower and Friday is a hard stop for me, I would like to offer Thursdays, or Mondays, or Tuesdays. I think Mondays would be a great time, it's a way to start the week and plan accordingly and plan forward. Personally, I am of the opinion that Draft A is the best draft for me. So it ends before Memorial Day, it, so outside of the conversation of the day of the early-release day, Draft A, I believe, is what best meets the needs of our families. So I respect our need for, Mr. Ayers, 86 days, is that what it is? I respect our need for 86 days, which makes our Thanksgiving break shorter. I love the week as a parent, but I'm willing to give up those two days for that. I want to, I thought this through, Mr. Ayers, tell me if I'm wrong, but because Christmas is at the beginning of the week for the next four or five years, that is why we are in the pickle we're in with Christmas break. And when Christmas gets to be back on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we will then be able to put Christmas, this first week of Christmas break will be the week of Christmas versus the week before Christmas. And that is why we have that imbalance from Semester One to Semester Two. I think I've, math is hard, but I think that's what I figured out. So, because what will then begin to happen is, we will soften that imbalance between Semester One and Semester Two. And is that correct-ish?
I'm hesitant to say without actually running the numbers and looking at that, but also understand the other thing, it's on the front end where that August 10 date is.
Yes.
August 10 date keeps pushing forward, which then limits, so it's a...
It's a cross-reference, I got you. The other thing I want to, I want to offer, I did have a conversation with a high school principal this morning, discussing that imbalance between Semester One and Semester Two. For a regular instructional teacher, I think most of us would say, extra days Semester Two is great, it's time to prepare for testing. So there's not going to be an incredible frustration with having extra days Semester Two. However, when you're looking at a teacher who teaches high school psychology, sociology, driver's ed, those semester courses, there is going to be a, what looks to be about a six-day imbalance, and so I think it's just about acknowledging that there are going to be short three days in Semester One and added three days in Semester Two, and their instructional pacing guide, and from a curriculum perspective, we're just going to have to look at that, and maybe Dr. Livinggood would be the best person to discuss with that, about what that pacing guide shift would need to look like to absorb that imbalance of days that we would see. But for me, Draft A makes the most sense outside of the Wednesday being the early-release day. So I'm open to creating conversation around a different day choice, but from every other aspect of the calendar, Draft A is my calendar.
I just want to add real quick that, like I said before, the early-release day being on the calendar, or what day of the week it is, does not have any impact on the actual days that we're attending school, start-stop, that kind of thing.
Yes, yeah, so for start-stop and vacations, Draft A has my support.
Ms. Conrad?
I just want to advocate for our administrators, because we've talked a lot about what parents want, what families want. They definitely were in favor of the Friday. The teachers do not want the Friday, but administrators are begging for this time with their staff, exactly what Mrs. Thrower shared. We have so many teachers that do not have a teaching degree, and we have so many non-instructional staff that they don't have time to meet with. So although we're getting a lot of feedback about this one-hour early-release time, it is definitely needed, so I appreciate the work that you're doing in helping us get to a solution.
Thank you. Reverend Cummings, do you want to weigh in on it, or do you want to hear what the discussion has been thus far? Okay, perfect, and welcome, Reverend Cummings. He had an unexpected occurrence this morning, and we're grateful that you're here with us.
Incarceration.
It was not incarceration, you were not in jail.
It felt like it.
Please, please let everyone know, you were not in jail.
I wasn't in jail. I wasn't in jail.
You were excused. Okay, so I appreciate the dialogue that we've had thus far, Board, for sure. I've heard a hard stop, I've heard a hard stop. Here's where I'm seeing this right now, and I don't want to say it's a hard stop, but I am definitely more inclined to the idea of a full day, and I understand that we've just talked about what that would look like, but a full day rather than one hour here each week. Depending on when that day might be, I have not participated in professional development as a teacher and/or administrator might have, but I can only imagine how much more powerful a full day is, having attended multiple conferences throughout my professional career. Having one hour a week, while powerful, dependent on what is done in that one hour, I could certainly see breakouts occurring throughout a full day, where perhaps an administrator gets a portion of that day to do certain things with the staff, and then a portion of the day is for beginning teachers and a portion of the day. It just appears to me that a full day is more beneficial than all of this breakup, but I reached, as I had told before, I had reached out to multiple different school districts, those that have consistent half-days, quarter-days, whatever we're calling it... consistent half-days, quarter-days, whatever we're calling it, early release, have had them for a long period of time, and those that haven't have kind of flipped around, and they're like, well, we tried Fridays, and then we tried Wednesdays, and now we do, I'll use Pinellas as an example, they did Fridays and Wednesdays, and now they have four full days, which are in October, February, March, and April. I don't know that that's the right solution, based on the timeframe that they're planning them out, but I'm just using that as an illustration. The dialogue I did hear from other districts, some are Wednesdays and some are Fridays. So, I mean, it's kind of all over the map. Those that used to have them, that don't have them anymore, aren't because parents made too much of a gripe about it. So, I know that we have three drafts in front of us. I know what you all were charged to do, which I'm grateful for all the work that you put in, including Vice Chair Thrower on that committee, that you all were charged to put an early release day back in the calendar. Perhaps you could help us revisit that thought process as to why that was the charge that you were given from the get-go on just this whole thought process?
From our administrators and our teachers wanting more time, because with everything that they're being confronted with and faced with, all the new programs, the new testing, more and more is being put on our staff. And we wanted to find a way, not particularly, not just to give our instructional staff that time, but also, as you've mentioned before, our paraprofessionals' time to get that learning. Because, remember, when we would have in-service days, which were completely days off, a lot of those paraprofessionals didn't come to work, because they only work on student days. So, the committee looked to try to find a way to best accommodate and make concessions, because there is no perfect solution that's going to answer every single question. So, what we landed on was an hour early release weekly for consistency's sake. And then, it's not just popping up on the calendar, oh, here it is, you know, we went two months without one, now we have one. For consistency's sake, to give the opportunities for that paraprofessional learning, collaborating with their teachers as well, as well as the consistency of, for the parents, for the daycare, because we know that it's every so often. And that hour early release then makes the actual class time longer, because the one thing that you always heard was, with early release, oh, we do nothing in class. Well, in a 25-minute class period, sometimes it's very difficult to get things settled down, get some instruction going, and then you go. But with an hour early release, as opposed to an hour and a half or two hours, which it was, you're able to then have a 45-minute class, where you can actually get some functioning done. So, it makes that more legitimate as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. The only thing I would add, that the committee also discussed, was that by having the consistent early release on a given day, rather than opposed to one day, it allowed for more differentiation at the school level. So, if you think about the teachers that we have, and we talked about their varying skills and knowledge, right? A veteran teacher might not need one particular training, but a brand-new teacher, maybe who's going through alternative certification, they might need something completely different. And so, the committee felt that by having the early release on one day a week, provide more autonomy and flexibility for schools, rather than one particular day. The other thing I'll share with you is, school student pathways and assessment also shared that, what the high-performing districts do, they, the A districts have that, an early release consistence. And then, they also shared that those, most of those are on a Wednesday. There's only three districts. All of those are B districts that have it on an optional day. Orange County would be the only outlier, theirs is on Wednesday, but there is still a B district.
And just one quick thing that I, just adding to the conversation, because the one thing that I have not seen or heard from anyone, is instead of an early release, actually having a late arrival for students. And I haven't seen or heard from anyone, but I know whenever I was a high school student back in Tennessee, we had the option of, on one, anyway, that's a whole different thing, but we, for the school year, could do a late arrival or an early release. And we had a couple of community citizens that mentioned a late arrival, haven't heard another single district do it. Don't know what that would do to bus schedule, but I question if a late arrival would actually help people more so than early release, just leaving that out there. Ms. Thrower, did you have something next?
Thank you, yes. And to be clear, the idea that I am proposing, as far as simply adding true time, was not something that the calendar committee discussed. What our task was, was to look at being able to provide professional opportunities, and so, that's how the early release day, adding them back in, became part of that conversation. You know, we all know in the past, we had the sporadic ones. Well, very few people really liked those. And from the, again, from a reality perspective, instructional quality, a lot of schools suffered. There were some schools where attendance was the same, but I will say that in many, many instances, attendance dropped, instructional quality suffered, you know? So, is that the best solution? So, when I propose this outside of the box, much more expensive idea. It is from a truly heartfelt, maybe once-in-a-blue-moon opportunity, where the money may be there, because we just had a funding referendum renewed, where the courage will be there, and the ability to cover all of the bases. You know, we have, myself as a board member, saying, you know, Wednesday seems like a pretty hard stop to me. We have another board member saying, Friday seems like a pretty hard stop to me, all for very valid reasons. So, if we have all these really valid reasons not to do something, have we really reached the solution yet? I don't, you know, I see Mr. Avery sitting out here, I would, you've been part of the conversation, I would love to hear some feedback. I know this would be novel. I understand that teacher contract days have to be negotiated, so do paraprofessional contract days. However, I also know from having lived through, having two failed schools in my district, that are no longer failed schools, that are prospering schools, which is Oak Crest and now Fordham, that we can do things differently. And there are ways to make things better, if we just keep thinking it through.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Avery as well, too, concerning how they...
And I was thinking that as well, Board. I was interested, because our script and our usual process is that public comment is actually after our discussion, if it pleases the Board, would you be comfortable with us actually allowing public comment in the middle of this discussion?
Yes. Since we have an important committee member here.
Okay. Terrific. Mr. Avery's smiling from ear to ear, so he loves the idea that we're bringing him up. Mr. Avery from the Marion Education Association, would you mind adding to our conversation?
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak now. I'll be official, Mark Avery, A-V-E-R-Y. I'm the president of the Marion Education Association. Last week, I got a call that there was a rumor that there were three calendars, and I didn't know anything about it, because I'm on the calendar committee, and I would have been told. And so, I was kind of, I said, no, there's not. And then, whenever we posted the meeting, and I went and looked at the agenda, and there was three calendars, I said, oh, wait, there are three calendars. So, it's not a rumor. And so, I sent a survey to the members of the Marion Education Association, and asked for their feedback, because I assumed that you would ask for some information. And I don't think there's a, as you, I swear that Mrs. Thrower has read all these comments, because things that you've been saying are what they're saying, and also, that almost every board member up there has said something that I've gotten. I have over 200 written comments. If they had to pick a calendar, they all liked to see the best. That seemed to be the overwhelming, because it had the Thanksgiving week. I think, no matter which calendar you decide, there is going to be people that are going to challenge it, because it's a different way. We've had Thanksgiving off the whole week for six years now. So, they have gotten accustomed to that. Families have gotten accustomed to planning. So, even if we have that week off, and then there's some makeup days, we're going to have attendance issues, whether it's students or it's staff. If you, the early release, they have this taste from prior, where it was two hours, and students didn't come to school. And even in our previous meetings, the district said that was the highest attendance, the highest amount of student attendance, not being at school on those days. So, they, a lot of these comments say that, that students won't be here, that what are we going to do? The other fear they have is more on their plate, because there's no explanation of what's going to happen during those early release days. It may have been a discussion with district folks, it may have been discussions when you talk with principals, and they're like, we can do this, we can do that. So, for example, if I'm an elementary teacher, and I already have two days of collaboration, and this says PD and collaboration, am I now going to have a third day? Or am I going to get more time to plan? Because that seemed to be a common comment. Give me more time to do the stuff I need to do. It's going to, it's going to be challenging for them either way. What I would mention, though, I know Mrs. Thrower talked about an extra day, and we've asked for that before. Sumter County has added an extra day specifically for professional development, but it costs, as you said, it costs a lot of money. And so, when, at the bargaining table, that has always been a concern, of the cost to add an extra day for staff. I have been advocating for us to follow, in the contract, it says that planning that's mandated, I'm sorry, not planning, training that's mandatory will be done on contract time. And as a district, we have not been very good at that. I'll give you an example. The mental health training that the state said that everybody must complete, we didn't have the time. And so, the majority of our district did that at the nights, on the weekends, and I stood up here and complained about that. I said that our mandatory training needs to be done during contract. And I've been advocating for that. So, that may, that would be the positive thing about an early release, and the fact that it's every week, so that people get to develop patterns. But if we're going to say there's extra collaboration, or we're going to take away collaboration on another day, so that you can plan, that may make people a little bit happier. I know, there's going to be people upset either way, because it's a different change. I mean, I could read comments, and some are positive. Most of them all say, they're all anonymous, and I can send them to you later if you'd like. They, basically, they all talk about Thanksgiving, that they want that week. And nobody paid attention to the end of the year. I'm just going to tell you, there's not one comment about when the school year ended. Almost all the comments are early release and Thanksgiving week. It's like 90% of all the comments that I was reading, than I've read prior to coming. So, I don't know, I don't, probably like you, I don't have a right answer, but maybe more definitive about what would happen on those early release. I know that, you know, we have mandatory trainings, that would be a great time to get that. And I'm not the training person, but I want to say, if I remember correctly, unless the law has changed, that we have to recertify in the mental health law, and it's probably coming up, whether it's, you know, everybody had to be trained originally, and then there's also a recertification for people, like after three years, or something like that, or maybe between five years. And it could have changed, so, because that seems to change every year. Did I answer, I mean, I don't have an answer for you, other than they all, if they had to pick one of these three, they all said C.
Okay. I think Ms. Thrower has a question for you. Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Thank you, and I really appreciate you coming up, and appreciate always working with you on this critical topic. Couple of years ago, when we were coming back from COVID, we front-loaded professional development, some extra days, and we called it Esser Week. And that was incredibly well-received. Teachers were so relieved, and I'm looking at you, Lori, as far as having the opportunity to, you know, come back and get things together, and try to get your head right for the coming year. The problem with front-loading all those days was that then there was no days afterwards to follow up. And this is where I look to you, Dr. Gallit, because this is day-to-day operations, and you are the expert in this. I'm thinking about coaching models, the best coaching models, and how we can provide the best coaching model in a non-pressurized situation, where we're taking, where we're reducing the variables of, okay, this bus was late, you know, these parents, you know, for many good reasons, very disapparent themselves, you know, were late picking their kids up, you know, that kind of chaotic. I'm about reducing chaos and increasing peace, and increasing the ability to really get better. So, with that in mind, coaching models.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. I think it goes back to the conversation that we had last time you heard from Dr. Hembrook and Mr. Ayers as well, about, I didn't propose the one-hour release, early release, but I am very passionate about supporting our educators. We need to provide, what I've heard repeatedly, and done a lot of reading, and heard from folks as well, we need to provide space and time for this to happen throughout the year. I think that is loud and clear. Whatever that looks like, I don't know. But, and I do think the extra time provided, as you said so well, during the height of COVID, before the year started, was very important and valuable. I think time at the end of the year is valuable. But what we haven't done, and that I think is creating some tension and additional stress, is the time throughout the year for the coaching, for the mentoring. We have increasing numbers of teachers who are coming from non-traditional pathways and routes. We have a lot of our veterans who are spending time with our beginning teachers, and we value and appreciate their expertise. With the new demands that we've had from the state, the new benchmarks, the new textbooks, the new assessments, there's been a lot of new, and we haven't created space and time for them to digest this, in addition to the demands and needs of our students that are changing as a result of COVID. That's what I hear loud and clear. That doesn't happen in one fixed time. It's a process, it's going to take time, but I think we need to value what it's going to take to do this a little bit differently. I, again, I'm not saying it's the one hour, I'm just saying we need to create time throughout the year to allow them to be able to adjust instruction and meet the needs of each other themselves, and working with families. That doesn't happen in one magical day before or after the school year. I do think, I do think very strongly it needs to happen somehow during the year.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And as a committee, we started to really explore the weekly early release, because the quote-unquote "half-days" just weren't making it. So, you know, in the spirit of continuing to think outside the box, I really appreciated the weekly early release being brought forward. At least, those are more predictable, because they're not sporadic. The question then truly becomes, how does that, can we really make that work for this district, in a productive way that provides the assurance that it's not just more? I think that's what I'm hearing, is that people just can't take much more, not just in our district, but across the whole country. We're in a hiring crisis. You know, we have superintendents, you know, it's from top to bottom. We have superintendents leaving all over the place, and we have them being relieved of their duties. You know, it gets to a point where you have to ask the critical question, who are we going to replace them with? Who's going to be left if we do not do something very, very direct?
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. Mr. Avery, I appreciate your coming forward. I do want to mention that whenever the Board had conversation about the instructional calendar, kind of took it out of the hands of the calendar committee. So, we had extensive conversation about that, and we charged Mr. Ayers and Dr. Hembrook to go back and bring us basically what they have in these three calendars. So, for you to not be aware that there were three calendars, that's honestly our fault, I guess, because we are the ones that, once it became a function of the Board, then we kind of took it over and gave them these recommendations. And the justification also behind reducing the Thanksgiving break actually was because it had, the option that we had in the one calendar was not starting school until, I think, the second week of January in winter break. And so, we discussed, okay, I think it would, while teachers are going to prefer having a full week off at Thanksgiving, I think they would further prefer taking a couple of days off of Thanksgiving, if we start school back sooner in January, because having their kids at home until the 8th or 19th... kids at home until the eighth, their ninth, or 10th of January is not ideal, as we've all witnessed this year. So that's how all that conversation, just for clarification on, on your part, on understanding where that dialogue went. And I, I agreed, I had heard multiple educators that loved the week off at Thanksgiving, but when we were talking about in comparison, I think they would probably give up two days around Thanksgiving break as opposed to what we were looking at for winter break. So that's kind of where we landed on that. I agree with Ms. Thrower that I'm, I'm ready for bold moves. I'm ready for whatever we believe it's going to take. I don't know that, that, what we have committed to, let me also say this, what we've committed to is that we're going to have a calendar, we're going to prove the end of January. So that's, and that's why we scheduled the special administrative briefing and work session. I, I've heard so many things so far and we haven't actually heard from Reverend Cummings yet, so I am interested in hearing what his thoughts are or feedback, but we're kind of all over the board right now as far as what we want to do. I'm ready for bold moves and I'm ready for whatever it's going to take to get us there, but I hear Dr. Gullett loud and clear that we need to create space and time. Yes, space and time for our educators and frankly, educators is across the board. Anybody that's impacting kids in this district needs space and time to ensure that they are getting adequate training, time, professional development, collaboration, all that that looks like. And I'm sure that's going to come at a cost. So Reverend Cummings, do you have anything for us right now?
I, I do, thank you, Chair. And I too heard the superintendent said that we need to create space and time for that, for this staff. I also heard that from staff as well, that they needed space and time to be able to effectively do what they need to do. And we're going to have to, we're going to have to create that space and time for the district, within the district. I'm not sure if any of these calendars are going to do that at this point. However, when I looked at the three calendars and hearing public comment from different folk in regards to what they were asking for, staff really, really, really needed or wanted the November, the Thanksgiving break. That's what I kept hearing overwhelmingly, that they were, that, that was just the moment that gave them that stress release, stress break. When I looked at the calendar for, I guess it's calendar B, which is the Friday, early release, I heard a few people ask about Fridays. My, my concern with the Friday calendar is that I'm thinking that folk would not utilize it to the benefit that it would be there, that there would be more people thinking it's an early weekend versus a time to really use it for collaboration and professional learning. I think students would also see it that way. Parents would see this, hey, we're going to just get out of town a little bit early because there's no school on early. So I'm concerned, I'm, I'm not for B at all. My, my biggest concern again would be making sure that any of these calendars that we choose, that there is an opportunity for there to be the professional learning for not only just our teachers, but our parent professionals as well, because they definitely need that time to gel with each other. So if we got to go, one, my recommendation is, is going to be C because it does encompass that and it also encompasses that Thanksgiving holiday. And they still get to go back early, still get to go back in a decent time right after Christmas, so that would be my, my recommendation.
Dr. James?
I just, I really think it's important that we bring light to the amount of days. And Mr. Ayers has, has mentioned this multiple times, but we have a minimum amount of days to award credit in high school. Is that correct?
It's, it's a minimum number of seat hours that you're required to do. And the minimum amount of days to get those seat hours is 86.
So C doesn't work as it's presented. And I, I think we're, we're looking over that. And I appreciate Mr. Avery suggesting that the teachers like this one the best with the week of November. I love the week of November, the week of Thanksgiving as well. We have to take a day off of Christmas then to meet the amount of seat time that is required to award credit. That is correct, right? In addition, I also think that potentially a full day opposed to a one-hour early release day could be beneficial. But if we were to do that every two months, so we, if, if you took August and September, that would be eight hours of professional development to equal one hour, one day, we would have to do that in September, November, January, and March. And to do that, would then have to find two more days away from a holiday in the fall and two more days away from a holiday in the spring or extend the school year. That is correct, right?
We would have to extend first semester into January and extend the school year, yes, correct.
Or take the days from Christmas break or Thanksgiving break.
Right.
So I just want to, if we're in the, in the spirit of transparency, we need to be, we need to have eyes wide open here because we're all, we're all creating wonderful conversation, but it's not plausible for the purpose of high school credit. And I don't know if we have middle school single, do we have middle?
Well, we have middle school students, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade earning high school credit. It's not just semester courses, because if a student takes, say, Algebra I with us and then transfers out of the district at the semester.
They would not have earned that credit. So I'm just really trying as gently as possible to stress that this doesn't work as it's presented and it has to look different to work. So, so we have to, even if we went forward with C, we have to take a day from Thanksgiving or Christmas to get to the days we need or come back with one day of Semester One after Christmas break. Did I say that correctly?
I want to say yes, but I, I'm hesitant without sitting at the computer looking at it. Also, C makes teachers have to come back after Memorial Day for one day.
So if, if Thanksgiving is sacred, then we would have to take a day or two from Christmas break?
Or, or, or just remove the early release day from January 3rd, 2024.
It's not, it's not a matter of hours, it's a matter of.
It's a matter of, C, okay, okay.
Semester One would have to end when we return from Christmas break would be the only other alternative.
What about adding some minutes to the school day? You know, you add five minutes to a school day, you get a lot of minutes in and nobody really notices.
That goes to start, school start times?
Right. Things like that.
That's a whole different conversation for another day, but we certainly, I believe, would like to have conversation about start and stop times and that sort of thing. I, I am still curious as to why high schools start so late and why, anyway, I, I, that's a whole different conversation for another day. Perhaps we'll have a work session on it.
It's all related.
It is. Let's, let's get this figured out first.
I was talking about more in the spirit of trying to, to grab days because we still also, to add a little more mud to the pond, Veterans Day. You know, we have had that as a day on for quite a few years. We're looking at what the current veterans, you know, we've had a few wars since then. We have younger veterans now that have families, that kind of thing. So that's another thing that we haven't landed on yet.
For the next two years, Veterans Day, I believe, lands on a weekend. So the actual day of November 11th, we may have at least a window this year to not have to address the specific day. Granted, I'm sure the observed day will be the 10th. But yes, no, I completely applaud that because as we now have a board member representative on a couple of veterans committees in the community, we'll get to learn even more of their perspective on really what the gist is of, of how we need to observe Veterans Day.
Yes, because we are an outlier as evidenced, you know, by what happened during the hurricane time and those are anomalies certainly, but it created a lot of confusion. So yes, I look forward.
So if it's taken away, you're talking about, well, why not remove this September 6th early release day?
It doesn't make a difference.
It has to be days, actually, a full day.
A full day.
Full days. And that's why A or B currently allow for 87 days because the two days at, at the Thanksgiving holiday are, are given up there. And so that puts us at 87. And Mr. Ayers, you said the actual required for credit is 86?
Yes. And, you know, historically in the past as well, we've, we've traditionally, six years ago, had an October in-service day and a January in-service day. And we took those and stacked them in the front, which then gave us another day that we're actually attending school and it wasn't a day off. And so that's how initially, when those days were claimed for Thanksgiving, that's how they were initially moved to get them back. Six years ago, when we went to a week.
And six years later, if I may, Chair, you know, it's a different reality for people that are trying to travel during Thanksgiving week and again, share, share custody, you know. But in the end, I, I believe what we're trying to do is make sure that every day that we're expecting kids and, and our staff to be at school, that, and be productive, that that's our focus, you know? Because doing something to say, well, you know, we did it, but it, it provides a slide-out. Now I'm having that. You know, we're, we're talking about maximizing productivity, maximizing instructional time.
Well, seeing that, the, the only one that then does make sense is A. That gives you the 87 days upfront. However, it doesn't acknowledge what our staff is asking as far as for Thanksgiving.
So, and I want to go back to ask a question that I asked previously, just looking at, what are we calling those, the little diamonds that we have on the calendars that show the end of the grading period?
End of the grading period, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And, and looking at October specifically, so if the end of the grading period is October 11th, yet the teacher work day is not until that Monday, when do they have to have final grades in and we're going to actually have two days starting the next quarter?
Yeah, October's an anomaly because that week of the 9th through the 1st, or the 9th through the 13th is FTE week. And so we traditionally, with the Wednesday being the early release day, I mean, the end of the nine weeks, we would have the teacher work day on a Friday for that, but that's FTE week.
Oh, okay.
And that's, that's in the calendar.
That adds a whole different cog to this week.
Yes. Every year, the October, end of the semester and that's.
Yeah, we can't put a day off that week. Okay, so that, just understanding when the teachers will have to have their grades in and all of that with the, it's not ideal, but Dr. Gullett?
Madam Chair, yeah, I do, thank you. And I was, I'm still thinking about Board Member James and some points I think you were mentioning about what's not being mentioned. And if I may, this is an incredibly complicated puzzle, as you all know. And those of you who are new to this now realize how complicated this is, but I want to provide an opportunity. Mr. Ayers, is there anything with this discussion that hasn't been mentioned that you think is important, such as, I'm glad the FTE week came up, anything else that is important in this discussion that hasn't been mentioned today?
The only thing that, that hasn't been mentioned today is the reasoning for the stacking of all the training days at the beginning of the year and that's so that our employees' pay cycle is not affected. Because we had actually, in our initial draft calendar, Dr. Thrower, if you remember, we had had an in-service day for some, some training like that done, but then payroll, thankfully there on the committee, mentioned, hey, we, we can't prepay teachers by state statutes. They have to work a certain number of days. And in order to do that, the second, teachers have to come back on the second to get those days worked to be able to get the same payroll. Now, next year, that's going to be another issue, but we're going to get much more ahead of that now that we are aware of that to let families and teachers know for pre-planning and things like that. And so, but I think it's important with professional learning and on the early release days for professional learning. The one thing I keep going back to is with the committee, is not only is that important for teachers, but it's important for the parent professionals that work with the teachers hand in hand. And having that one-hour early release allows that collaboration, not only with teachers, with administrators, but also with the parent professionals, because that's a workday for them. And so they would get that. In-service days, they never would have that opportunity.
So I want to go back to Dr. James' conversation about why Friday was a hard stop for her, if you don't mind elaborating a bit more on that. Because I, I do recall in the conversation we had in public comment before about if we were to do this, especially for those blended families, Friday would be the optimal day to do it. I, I hear that Wednesday's a hard stop, I hear that Friday's a hard stop. I, I do want to go back to why Friday potentially is. And then I believe, this is an opinion, but I, if we were to even move a different day and say Tuesday or Thursday, I, I could see those being challenging, well, I could see all the days being challenging. So I'm just going to leave that there. Dr. James?
So, so I met with a high school principal this morning. He brought to my attention something I hadn't thought of for Fridays, is when we have Fridays in the fall. So in addition to having been an educator, and I'll go on record to say, the last thing I want to do on a Friday is professional development, also, if I'm an educator on a high school campus on a Friday and we have a home football game, more to my point, the last thing I want to do is go do an hour professional development. I don't think Friday is an advantageous day for productivity in the professional development sphere. I honestly, in, in sitting up here for the last 70 minutes thinking about it, I think Monday is the best day. I think Monday is a great way to start the week. You could, as a, as a leader, an instructional coach, a dean, a principal, an assistant principal, you could segment your staff into learning communities, even as a, even as the lead teacher for the English department. And you pull your staff in on a Monday afternoon and you talk about what the plan is for the week. And you're able to forward plan for your week. I think that Monday would be the best day of the week. Monday, we also have the most holidays. So Monday would leave for the least amount of early release days because we have, as I look at draft day, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, I'm looking at maybe eight or nine days that are non-instructional days. So there are some teacher planning days and then obviously holidays that would fall on Mondays. So it would be the least amount of days that parents would be affected versus other days of the week with regard to the schedule. But Fridays, Fridays, in my opinion, just don't make sense for the, for the people on our campus.
And, and, we have so many comments. Okay, Ms. Conrad, go ahead.
The Friday discussion really came forward through our parents on our surveys and on, on our Facebook page. Fridays were going to be the most convenient for our families. That's where that, that comment came from. I agree with Dr. James that as an educator, Monday afternoon would be the most beneficial as we kick off our week and we're looking at what standards we're teaching, reviewing the standards that we've taught and how can we move our student learning forward. I think it is the most logical. I also want to say that as long as this time is valuable and it's used well, I feel like our staff will buy into this training. If it is not valuable, you know, if we don't plan for it well, we're going to be in the same situation that we were in six years ago? Is that what you said, Steve? When we had our early release, release days, that, that no matter what day we pick, as long as that hour is deemed valued, valued by our educators and, and we're giving them information that makes their week better and their instruction better, we will see buy-in. Because the first year that we try something, it's going to be difficult all the way around.
Ms. Conrad, just a point of clarification, it was two years ago.
Okay, two years.
That we reduced the number of early release days in the first step and then this year we did away with them altogether.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just go on the record as saying that I really, you know, Wednesday was a hard stop for me, but I didn't like Fridays either. There's a lot that I don't like about all of this. I'm warming to the idea of, of Mondays. Also keeping in mind what Mr. Avery shared about an, an additional day. It's just mind-boggling what, what. It's just mind-boggling what, what teachers are expected to do these days, the paperwork. It's so different than it was even five years, seven years, ten years ago, you know? So, we, we, we have to help them. We have to help them, and we have to help our paraprofessionals that are teaching. They are teaching, so. And maybe it would be a lot less expensive as well to look at a, possibly, a Monday option, but how do we include paras? And what's the feedback on providing a, an additional whole day somewhere for our educators?
A Monday early release would include the paraprofessionals that already worked for that day, just like any, any day early release. And again, that's why the committee landed on an hour early release, to be able to include the paraprofessionals in that training.
And then, what about the in-service days that we've done in, in the past? Would those then go away, you know, like those?
Well, we currently don't have any built into the calendar, but those days typically, I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn, but there's several different categories of paraprofessionals, some would work on those days and most of them would not. They only work days that students were there.
Right, like the, the planning week, the, the pre-planning week, we call it, you know? I feel like it's really important for our paraprofessionals to have the opportunity, if this is the teacher they're going to be assigned to, that they have a chance to, to plan with them before the school year starts. That's just good management, so.
They usually come the day before.
The day before, right, and that got negotiated a while ago.
Yeah, there's a day there, but typically, they do not.
Right. But again, that was when paraprofessionals didn't have the expectations on them and the reality that they're under now.
Chair, may I? Dr. Gullett, is there a way that we could get that information from Ms. Boston Allison? You may have already sent her a message while we're having this meeting to discuss. Just a very general number, how much does it cost to get everybody to show up to work outside of transportation, food service, but everyone who works on a school site, how much does it cost for them to show up for one day?
Is that prior to the school year?
I'm just saying, in general, how much does it cost, so we can at least have a number to bring forth to the conversation.
Madam Chair, we'll have to get the classifications of the employees that we want to include, and it will take a little bit of time, but we can certainly provide that to the board. I heard, heard mentioned earlier about the referendum and was thinking, and I wrote up here, "Cost," but we're going to have to look at all the employee groups and do some analysis. And we can certainly do that, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Thinking about more instructional paras, because they're the ones that are working with the teacher. You know, I don't know that there's anyone, if they're truly committed to their jobs these days, that, that doesn't feel additional pressure, you know? Love to honor all of them in some way, but, but we need to start where we are, and where we are is a way too many openings for classrooms. And, and that's what, that's the foundation of all of this, that and getting our kids to school.
So, based on the dialogue I'm hearing, it, it appears that we have at least a handful of us that could potentially be warming to the Monday day. That would then lend to additional conversation. As I just brought up earlier, if we're doing a Monday, why wouldn't we consider late arrival as opposed to early release? And I don't know the answer to that question, or what that would even look like. Yes, it would impact our bus schedules, but so will early release.
The issue, when we, we've had this discussion before, you know, in past committees about that, of looking for early, early release, early come, not early release.
Late arrival.
Late arrival, as opposed to early release. But, the, the issue becomes, and with full transparency, you have a hard stop for the start of school. And if busing becomes an issue, because so many schools share schools and we shift schools, if we have any snafu, we got kids coming late to school, late to breakfast already. Early release, the, the hard stop is going home, and so, there's, there's a little more flexibility if there's a late bus getting, a kindergartner didn't get off a bus in time, they had to find a parent, and then they were late getting to the secondary school to pick up the secondary school. So, that was the conversation that was had when we discussed late arrival several years ago. I don't know, I don't have definitive numbers on that, that was just the topic of discussion that was had at that point.
Chair, may I?
Yes, Dr. James.
I would offer, too, that that same conversation around MAP would, I think, almost be more important if it was the morning, because elementary car line is elementary car line, and they're there with their engine pumping at six fifty-eight, and they're going to, they got to be at work at seven fifteen, and so, while, you know, some may take a late lunch to pick up their kid at one thirty instead of two thirty, they probably have a hard stop of getting to work, and so that, we would really have to engage in that conversation around what that singular day for MAP would look like to accommodate families, from, based on my experience.
I see that, is that if it's a late start, I just see a lot of lateness with this, late to work, late to everything, and I see a lot of issues with parents who have those set hours, that they have to be at the job, who've made certain type of accommodations. And then, how would that look for the Marion After School program, early, that program? How's that going to look as well? So, I see a lot of issues with that one.
Vice Chair?
Okay, so, for the conversation, say, we landed on, on Mondays as an opportunity with an eye to our paraprofessionals and all of the things that, that we discussed. There's still some more details that, that we don't know, we're thinking about numbers that we would like to see, that, that's really our wheelhouse, you know? But yet, we also have constituents, and the constituents have been incredibly communicative with us. And by constituents, I mean, community members that are not involved with our school system at all, all the way down to ones that are teachers and parents, or staff members and parents, employees of ours, and they're also parents, however you want to classify them, we're hearing from everybody. So, so it is important to share what, what we've heard. But I'm doing my best not to bleed in, into the operational side of things, there's, there's fiscal questions that, that we have, that, that we need answered, and then we also have the, the logistical of the, the MAP, and, and could that even work on Monday afternoons? And, and how would we deal with that when it comes to our employees that have kids and the drop-ins and those kinds of things?
And staff ratios and for MAP, is, that's going to be outrageous? I mean, we need to have those numbers. So, I, I think at this point, and not to belabor this, that we have been talking about it, it's now ten twenty, I, perhaps, and this certainly is at the pleasure of the board, perhaps we need to see that calendar actually presented with the Monday one-hour early release, and put it out there today, and perhaps, Board, we need to have one more work session about, with all of this information coming back to us, because, Dr., and Reverend Cummings, you did not hear, the way the conversation started today, Dr. James presented, that if we do an early release of any kind at all, that Marion After School programs, in her opinion, should be available as a drop-in for all of our employees, and I think she said even potentially for parents as well, but that we would also pick up the cost of that, that's what that she recommended. So, those numbers
For our employees.
For our employees, right, for our employees, but those numbers, we have no idea what those numbers are right now, and Ms. Eubanks, I'm sure, is probably having heart palpitations thinking about what that looks like, because of the staffing challenges and potentially the numbers of, of students we're talking, and, and even the cost to her program, and the school district, as Attorney Powers alluded to, that we would then have to be paying Marion After School programs, so there's a lot of moving parts there. So, before we approve a day of early release, we do have that conversation on the table that we haven't been able to fully digest yet, because we don't actually have costs associated with that. So, Board, are, are we of the mindset potentially to take a look at what a Monday early release, one-hour early release calendar looks like? And if so, based on the conversation about the eighty-six days, I think that still has the two days that students are in school during Thanksgiving break, so they would be out of school the twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth, as opposed to a full week off at Thanksgiving. I just, I want to make sure that I'm hearing and giving the team the feedback that they need to potentially come back to us, and that we also need to get our calendars out and see when we can talk about this again.
May I?
Dr. James?
I'm of the opinion that we need to make a decision. I can, in my head, move the blue boxes to Monday instead of Wednesday. I am trusting that our staff is going to do what's best for our staff. I don't personally need a number for that, that number of teachers. I am entrusting that Dr. Gullett and her team, and Dr. Hembrook, as a representation of MAP for our district, are going to advocate on behalf of our teachers to make sure that they are supported. I don't need a number personally, as a board member, to feel assured that you all are going to do the absolute best for our, for our staff. I think we set this date, because this date was one of the last possible dates to be able to move forward, right? Correct. So, personally, I'm of the opinion we should make a decision today, and I'm going to trust our, our staff that, that Dr. Gullett and we have collectively hired to, to advocate for our teachers and make the best decision for them, personally.
And, go ahead, Ms. Conrad.
I would just agree, because, again, I'll reiterate, that I think most of our, our staff members' children are already in an extended day, so I don't personally anticipate that to be a big number for the teachers here in Marion County. If they have young children, they're already having to make accommodation for, accommodations for aftercare.
Madam Chair, if I may, forgive me. To Board Member James and Board Member Conrad's points, I, perhaps this might be helpful. Because we're asking perhaps for the staff to have coverage for that extra hour, if that's where the Board wants to go, I would absolutely say, we're not going to charge our staff for the additional hour that we're trying to create for them to have the time they need to do their roles. Does that, that help?
That's why I knew that, that, I knew that that was the direction we could go, which is why I don't need to see hard numbers, to know that we're going to make the best decision to support our staff.
Our intent, I think everyone in here, I think the entire board I've heard is, is of the agreement that we need to provide support to our educators. So, if, if it lands with an extra hour, while the Marion After School program is a separate entity, we certainly wouldn't want to create a burden on our staff when we're trying to create space for them to do what they need to do for our students. So, we would have to find, we would find a way, if, if that makes sense. Now, there would be a financial cost, I'm sure. We had some, we had some conversation about that when, when the committee first came forward and shared this, but, but I, I certainly wouldn't want to do anything that would put our staff in a difficult spot when we're trying to help them.
Thank you. And, Dr. Gullett, I appreciate that, from a realist standpoint, the logistical nightmare that that's going to become for drop-ins, for those who are not currently utilizing Marion After School program, which is what has been proposed for just those drop-in students, we have numbers of employees who utilize, or will need to be utilizing a drop-in service in a school that they are not in, that they are a high school teacher, and they have an elementary school student, and potentially a middle school student. We'll just use Eighth Street in Osceola as an example, because Osceola has middle school, but it's a teacher at a high school, they'll need to use that drop-in service. That's a logistical nightmare, that, as long as the staff is committed to figuring that out, and to covering the cost, and what that staffing is going to look like, maybe the numbers aren't as significant as I believe, but I, I think if we're offering a drop-in service solely for that one hour, I think the numbers will be larger than we're anticipating.
And, and if I may, Madam Chair, the, the other additional item, as I mentioned before, is the staffing itself, so I can't make any promises to what flexibility might be offered, because it might not be as, as easy as it sounds, and I do think staffing is going to be our, one of our biggest challenges, but I will tell you that we'll, we would do everything we need to do, and I don't know what that's going to look like, but we certainly would.
I have a thought of a clerical conversation with regard to staffing. On these early-release days for one hour, every individual who works a set hours, based on their board-approved job description, is going to continue to work that same set hours, even though it is an early-release day. Is that a correct assumption? So, with that being said, outside of instructional paraprofessionals and special need paraprofessionals, we have other individuals who would be on staff, who would theoretically, on a regular day, be supervising children and/or working in a capacity with the asterisk of other duties as assigned within their job description. So, in a hypothetical, theoretical conversation, would there be some level of clerical or, or non-instructional support staff that would be available to support MAP for the one hour, that there may be an additional influx of students?
Would, would, would that be collective bargaining, something collective bargaining, that they do that, that's what I'm thinking.
An MESP?
We would have to be very careful in looking at job descriptions and, and work with, with our unions and the provisions provided to offer, but not require.
And additionally, essentially, there, those individuals are, are paid out of a different budget entirely, so what that looks like, putting that on Ms. Eubanks and her staff, putting employees under her purview essentially for four hours a month that are not employees that report to her, I, I appreciate the recommendation, because it, it, from a logical standpoint, it seems like we've got people on campus, they should just be able to go and take care of kids. I mean, that, we're doing what's best for kids, so let's do it. There, I think there's potential challenges there, but not to say those challenges can't be overcome.
We'd have to work with our unions and look at other options with their, with their, perhaps, flexibility with their daily schedule, but those are things we would want to work with our unions on.
Thank you.
And, and Dr. James, that is, I think those are the conversations we really have to have, of talking this thing out, and getting it, you know, being bold on what we're going to do, and trying to figure out how to solve this. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with moving the date to Monday as well. If we're going to move it, let's move it, let's get something done, and then we still have, we know this is going to be a work in process. I do want to tell Mr. Ayers and Ms., Dr. Hembrook, that we do understand, you guys have been laboring at this thing, so I don't want to, I, I want to tell you, thank you, just first of all, with that, you guys are putting in some, some hours with this, but we, we as a board have to move forward in the district on making a decision on this calendar, so that we can stabilize, keep our district stable, and be stable going into the new year, new school term. I'm fine with Monday.
Monday? Vice Chair?
Thanks, and yes, everything that Board Member Cummings just shared, it has been very helpful to me to hear from Mr. Avery, that it, the number was two hundred, I believe, teachers, that you got feedback from, that, yes?
Four, at least four hundred replied.
Okay, at least four hundred replied, two hundred actually wrote comments, that as far as the one-hour early release, they are open to that with assurances that it's going to add less to their plate and more to their quality of life as educators, because that's critical. We know that the historic half-days were not ideal, we, we've been there, we've done that, and to just say, "Well, we'll just go back to doing half-days then," that's going backwards. We, we have to go forward. I still have a lot of reservations about this, I, I know that we're on a timeline, and that's important, too. I would really like to have more conversation moving forward about professional development days off, so that our, our, the people that are involved in it can truly, you know, have their head in the game, and I'm hearing from a lot of families that it's, rather than the split And I'm hearing from a lot of families that it's, rather than the split stuff or even early stuff, it's easier to just not have it at all. And I think that that's been proven to us with those historic half-days. If it's not consistent, too many of them don't do it, and, and quality of instruction suffers. So, I, I still have a lot of reservations about this, um, but I'm willing to go with, with the group on, on, on the Mondays. Uh, the good news is, is that the instructional calendar, right now, we're doing it year to year. Um, I, I would like, moving forward at some point, if we land on something that really does appear to be providing that stability, um, that we look at, you know, continuing that for, because once you've done it for a year or two, it becomes the tradition, kinda like the Thanksgiving week off. We never had it, and then all of a sudden we got it, and now, you know, and, and it's like, if we had graduations at North Marion High School's football stadium, well, everybody loved that, but then when we moved it to the Ag Center, by the next year, that's where we always did. So, you know, it, it's just, it's the human craving for stability and, and tradition, so...
Thank you, Vice Chair. Do ladies have any additional comments?
I have a question. Setting this as we would, would this, would, would that then make the Board, um, commit to, at this point, whether the day of instruction, instruct, or day of release is either early release or late arrival? Or would it just say that the Mondays are the day? In other words, is this something where the Board is going to come back and consider the remainder later?
I, I believe what I've heard, because late arrival is something that would be so foreign and so difficult, and additionally with, since it was my recommendation, additionally with the transportation challenges that we have already experienced, not to say, I mean, if we're being completely transparent, we're in the business of ensuring kids are in school, and we're not in the business of, of worrying about at what time they get home. I know that sounds really harsh, but making sure they're in school is more important, uh, at least for the instructional calendar. And so, what I'm hearing is if we were to do a late arrival, that could potentially cause additional challenges with those who are providing, or those who are riding our buses for transportation's sake. Though I still am, am interested in that thought process, but I'm also interested in a seven-period day. But there's all kinds of things I'm interested in that we aren't able to talk about today and don't have the money to do. So, um, I am gonna be in Ms. Thrower's camp and say, I'm still not completely convinced that an, uh, one-hour early, early release is the entire way to go. However, for the sake of putting it on our agenda for next Tuesday's Board meeting, let's do it. Let's put it on the agenda, let's not put it in the consent agenda and put it in discussion. And if there is additional feedback that we receive over the course of the next six to seven days, that is very pertinent and something we need to discuss at length on that day, then we can do that. Uh, but let's put a calendar out that shows a Monday early release, one-hour early. The other thing I wanted to note here, and I want to thank you for, at least I'm looking, I'm just looking at Calendar B right now for the sake of conversation, uh, and I think it's on, yeah, I'm gonna look at Calendar B, uh, because I appreciate that you put the early release maybe used for weather makeup days, but additional weather makeup days options, one in November, two in December, and one in April. I appreciate that. I think personally, that's the one thing we haven't talked about today that kind of has varied a bit and is different than what the proposed that we received previously. I know we said something about moving them into November, moving them, I, I appreciate having one in November, a couple in December, and one, and that way, we should be covered one way or the other, also understanding if we do approve early release days, that those could be used first. So, um, Board, are we in consensus to make it a Monday calendar that we will have on our agenda for next Tuesday, that will go live with Board Docs? I know it's, will, has already been advertised or will be advertised, uh, for, that this is a topic of, that we'll be voting on next week, and then, um, we'll put it in discussion. Mr. Ayers?
Board Chair, one point of clarification. With the Monday early release, and then you were looking at Draft B for our calendar, are we still in agreement not to have it in May? But keep the two early releases in April for trust, for training and testing if possible?
I am, yes.
And then, since we're going with a Monday, would Monday, the 14th of August, which would be the third day of school, is it your purview that that'd be an early release? It was to be an early release in the old calendar on a Wednesday or a Friday, but it's the 14th, and then also November 20th, which is that spring, that Thanksgiving week.
Thank you for the questions. Personally, I would say no on both of those, specifically the one of the two days of the Thanksgiving that we're going to have students in school. Um, and frankly, the, the 14th also, because-
Start of school.
That's the start of school. And, and I, I had seen on Calendar B that we were gonna have an early release the day after school started, and that didn't really make sense to me either. But, uh, Board, would you agree with the early releases beginning on August 21st as a Monday, and also not including November 20th?
I'm fine with that.
I, I, I'm fine with it, I'll, I'll, I can go with it, but I would have even said, not start early release until the 28th of Au- August. Um, we need those times. I do, all time matters, it just gives us more time with the students. But that's just me.
Well, with that thought, then I, honestly, I wouldn't start them until September. I, I know that would be-
The only comment would be for consistency. You know, once we start something, we would start it.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, and the reason I'm saying that is because, um, we're gonna have, they're gonna be, teachers come back the 2nd of August, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Staff come back the 2nd, you know, you have all that time, and, and soon as you start it, is, I mean, I think they need to get that continuity, and then once you start on the 28th, if that's just me, um, it would just flow from there. But, I'm fine either way.
I, I definitely believe we should not have it on November 20th. And I can go either way on the August date, but November 20th, when you only have students for two days that week.
So, what I'm hearing-
Want to be an hour shorter, isn't it?
Just to, for clarification, where we would start the early release on August 21st, we would not have the early release on November 20th, then into April, starting at 15th through the end of the year. So, we would just have it on the April 1st and the 8th in April, and then it'd be done for the end of the year.
Right.
And we've also heard Option B.
Because of testing. Yeah, that, I'm just looking off of, of Draft B, but, but yes.
A and B are the same, just the day of the week that it was early release.
Okay. I, and I, I will just reiterate, since Ms. Thrower already said it, I'm not completely convinced that this is the direction we're gonna go, but we're putting something out there that we're gonna vote on next week.
And I, I think we'll have, um, once we say it's gonna be on the agenda, I think our community has opportunity to come-
Absolutely.
And give public comment on it, and I'm sure we'll hear from folk for the next six or seven days.
And I think one thing that we can do and commit to the public, and Ms. Thrower, this is just for you, um, that I've learned a lot from working with Ms. Thrower and seeking input and things like that. So, I think that once next year, when we start developing the calendar, and that, um, we seek input prior to the development of the calendar. So, once early release days start going, say, in November, we would put out a, a, a parent questionnaire survey, staff survey, to find out what's working, what's not working, and things like that, so that we could get that information ahead of time.
I, I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers, and, and also, um, communicating out early to the public, the, all of the factors, because most people wouldn't know that. You know, they're dealing with their own reality, and there are things that definitely have to be brokered to try to make this work as best as possible. I'll admit it, I'm sitting here in a prove-me-wrong situation, um, you know, starting with Monday early release every week, uh, no longer the, the full week at, at Thanksgiving, you know, uh, it's, it's a lot of change, but change is always difficult. And if it moves this district forward, and people will get used to it, and then it becomes the way we've always done things, you know, wi- within a year. But the, the continued communication, authentic communication, that people that weigh in are truly being heard, just because you don't get your way, so to speak, doesn't mean that you weren't hurt, it doesn't mean what you said isn't being agonized over, it doesn't mean that, you know, probably, I'm not the only one that loses sleep over it. That's how important this is. You know, it, it provides the foundation for everything that we do across the whole school year. So, that's where I am with that.
Okay, Board, I think we have, uh, solidified that thought process. Thank you, Mr. Ayers, thank you, Dr. Hembrook. I do want to offer the opportunity for additional public comment. Um, is there any additional public comment? Mr. Avery, welcome back to the podium.
I'm already getting some.
Actually, this is kind of not about the counter, but, but the superintendent started off with, with Literacy, and I just wanted to say that, um, the Strawberry Festival, which is the first weekend in March, um, we, uh, will have a booth there where we give away books to the community. We did it last year, um, and we were already planning on, we're planning on doing it again this year to help support Literacy and the community for everyone, so it goes along with, uh, NEAs Read Across America, and, um, so that's what we do also, so we're in support of that also. So, a positive note.
Any additional public comment? Anyone? Anyone? With that, I'll bring it back to the Board. Uh, Board and, uh, comments for the rest of the day. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, do you have anything for us?
Thank you.
Attorney Powers?
Uh, just to say that Friday, um, I spent time with, uh, Ms. Thrower, Ms. Debick, Mr. Hurley-Hee, um, discussing with the working group, um, some of the, uh, uh, plans for our inter-local agreement, um, and the sections that are initial in the local agreement, as well as then perhaps what we'll have after our studies. So, we're trying to come to some initial determinations of what could and couldn't be in there, uh, to be submitted to our Board for an up or down vote. We're trying to make sure that it, it is going to be, uh, as well solidified and attractive to everyone as possible prior to, uh, calling it forward for a, uh, for Board vote. So, we'll keep you updated.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. We certainly appreciate yours and Ms. Thrower's advocacy for the school board interests in that. Dr. Gullett?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. James?
I don't have anything additional at this time.
Thank you. Reverend Cummings?
No comments.
Great.
No further comments.
Vice Chair Thrower?
Thank you, and Attorney Powers shared, uh, the, the gist of what I was going to share. It was a meeting that started at 10:00 and ended at 6:00 last week.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your advocacy for the school board's interests. Um, and with that, I don't have additional comments, other than to say, we will be back here on Thursday for our regularly scheduled, uh, administrative briefing and work session, uh, with the items presented in Board Docs that folks can see from the agenda there. And with that, we will adjourn this special administrative briefing and work session at 10:44 a.m.